All right. Thank you, everybody, and welcome to the March 29, 2021, meeting of the Homewood City Council. Believe it or not, we don't have any proclamations or announcements tonight, so we will actually just start with the invocation followed by the pledge. And do we have Pastor Matt Andrews? From Trinity is here to do the invocation for us. If everyone will please stand.
Thank you, Pastor Andrews.
No problem.
Let us pray. Holy One, known by many names and beyond all names, Spirit of life, Spirit of love, Spirit of community, Spirit of justice, we ask your blessings on the people who have been called to lead Homewood, the community in which we live and work and play. Help them as leaders to not ask first, "How do we fix this?", but rather, "What do we need to learn?", or "How might we need to change?", or "To whom do we need to listen?". Remind them, because we all forget from time to time, especially in the noisiness of what passes for political debate today, that they are not only leaders, but also servants, and that it is their responsibility and ours to serve the common good of all. Remind them that no matter where we live, everyone, gay, straight, transgender, black or white, Hispanic or Asian, Muslim, Jew, Hindu, Christian or atheist, is our neighbor, our sibling, and that throughout the ages prophets have called the leaders of the people to respect and protect the least of those among us: our children, the elderly, the poor, those who are hungry, those who have no homes, those who are ill in body, mind, or spirit, the strangers and immigrants in our midst, those who live on the margins, those who are alone, those who are forgotten. Grant them and us the wisdom and courage to know and do what is right and good and true. May they and we speak out when it is time to speak out, and listen patiently and receptively when it is time to listen. May they and we always be guided by the Spirit of community, by the Spirit of justice, and by the Spirit of love. This we pray in the name of all that we hold sacred and holy, all that we hold good and right and true. Amen.
Thank you very much. If everyone will face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Pastor Andrews. We appreciate it. All right, so with that, I will call this meeting to order. Ms. Salter, if you will, call the roll, please.
Yes, sir. Counselor Gualtney?
Here.
Counselor Gier?
Here.
Counselor Alamon?
Here.
Counselor Wolverton?
Here.
Counselor Sims?
Here.
Counselor Jones?
Here.
Counselor Smith?
Here.
Counselor Nels?
Here.
Counselor Andres?
Here.
Counselor Harden?
Here.
And President Wyatt?
Here.
Everybody's here. Cover the forum.
Thank you very much. All right, next, we have the reading of the minutes from our March 8, 2021, meeting. Those minutes have been distributed by Ms. Salter earlier this week. I would entertain a motion for, to dispense with the reading of such minutes and for approval of the same.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Mr. Alamon. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 11 to 0. Next, we have board vacancies, and we actually have a few of those. First is the Municipal Housing Code Abatement Board from Ward 1. We need to open that position. Two weeks work for y'all? Or do we need longer than that? Two weeks?
So you're going to open it to the 12th at 4:30?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Next, we have the Library Board. Ward 3 position needs to be opened. Y'all good with two weeks for that one?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So that one will also be closed on April 12 at 4:30. And then Board of Education, Ward 1, it needs to open up, and that one will be two weeks because it has to be finished by the end of April. So that one will also be the 12th at 4:30.
And they don't take office just for the noon council? They don't take office till noon? They have to be in place for the code by April?
Yeah, by statute, we have to do it in April, or we miss the opportunity. So we will see who applies and do interviews if necess-- the interviews for that will take precedence because there is a time deadline since we have so many things closing at the same time. So we will, we'll let those interviews take precedence over everything else and make sure we get them scheduled so that we can have a, make an appointment by the, at our second meeting in April. That's the last opening that I have, unless anyone else has something. The only other thing we need to do is we need to set medical clinic board interviews. We kind of got delayed with that with spring break. I wanted to see if we could do Thursday of this week?
Is that close today?
Yeah. It'll make it all the more fun.
We'll call it Friday. We can have a good Friday.
Right. So if we could do Thursday at 5:00, if you'll check with them for about 5:00, 5:15, and 5:30.
Okay.
And if anyone can make that, that would be great. If you can't, that's okay. I see your anguished face. It's okay. Mr. Sims, yeah?
Excuse me, President Wyatt. Yes, I just want to give a reminder to you that Mayor McCloskey had to open the beautification board for people to submit their interest as well, so just wanted to mention that as a reminder.
Thank you. Yes, it's open, but I can't remember when it ends.
When does it close?
I believe we have to extend it another time because there are so many spots.
Okay.
I wanted to say we did it for, it was over a month.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm trying to look at my last time's agenda, but I have it.
I was thinking it went to the 12th as well, but that could be.
Yeah, I was saying it did go to the 12th, but I can look and give me, if we can move on, I'll give you a court.
Yeah, that's fine.
It's the 12th.
So 12th?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. 12th will be a busy day for getting submissions. We didn't mean to do that to you, Ms. Salter, but--
Now, a minute. I've been promising I was going to clean up the board. Be careful what you ask for.
That's right. That's right. All right. Okay, next, we have one addition to the agenda tonight.
And it wasn't until I just saw it as well, for sure, the beautification board.
Okay, thank you. So we have one addition to the committee referral agenda tonight. It is, will be item 220321, request to set a public hearing and referral to the Special Issues Committee for consideration of a variance to increase the size of two wall signs at 2719 19th Place South, brought to us by Rod Burchill and Wyatt Pugh. And this will go to special issues. That item will also be added to the other new business agenda for the purpose of setting the public hearing. All right. So with that, I would entertain a motion for approval of the amended agenda. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gualtney, second by Mr. Alamon. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 11 to 0. All right, and that brings us to the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Alamon, second by Mr. Gualtney. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That also passes 11 to 0.
Could I make a comment?
You can.
Thank you, Mr. President. I did want to mention, I hope in the future, that we don't have, the, the purpose of a consent agenda is really for handling everyday items that don't really take a lot of discussion. And this discussion probably took, you know, upwards of six hours. And I hope in the future, we, we don't send out to council motions to just drop an item. We need to at least come up with something in committee, or as Robert's Rule states, you need to come out with a positive motion to vote. That, that's what we need to be doing, and, and we did not do that in this case.
Question.
And I just wanted to make a comment about that, that I hope in the future, we do not handle, handle this the way that it was handled. And that's all I'll say about it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. I agree. Thank, thank you very much, and I don't disagree with you about that. I don't know that we've ever done it this way in the past, but certainly, we got enough, we, we had a lot of conversation about this particular item, but there would be a danger with doing it that way in the future, so I appreciate that. All right, that brings us to the old business agenda, and our first item is 170221, public hearing set for tonight, for consideration to rezone property at 2713 18th Street South from MSD to C4A. Applicant is Michael Moran, who's the owner, to facilitate the development of a new restaurant. This came from the Planning Commission with a favorable vote of 7 to 1 in recommendation of the rezone. All right, so we'll start with a report from Planning and Development. I know we've, may have had this once already, but I think it'd be good to go ahead and hear it again. Ms. Andres, please.
Sure. The committee, the committee met and voted 5 to 0 to refer this item to the full council without recommendation pending the public hearing. The motion was made by Counselor Gualtney and seconded by Counselor Nels.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, so with that, we will open the public hearing and ask that anyone to come forward that wants to speak for or against this item. Not seeing anybody. And I don't, I forgot, I apologize, I forgot my glasses. Is Mr. Pugh out there?
Yeah.
Mr. Pugh, could you just come up real quickly and-- Just to be clear, what we're doing here is, what we have before us is a rezone from MXD to C4A, and as I understand it, the C4A is consistent with the other of the two restaurants that are going in this location, in, adjacent to this location as well?
That is correct.
Okay.
It would, it would rezone this property in line with others just like it, all up and down 18th Street.
All right. And if there's no one else to speak for or against the item, then I will close the public hearing and ask if there are any questions or comments from the council.
You'll be the first one.
I do. Thank you, Mr. Kendrick. Sorry about that. Please, please give us the first reading, and then we'll, then we'll get questions.
Sure. It's an ordinance to further regulate the zoning ordinance and the zoning map of the city of Homewood, whereas the Planning Commission has favorably recommended to the city council a certain property described herein be taken from its current zone, MXD, mixed-use district, zoning district of the city, and rezoned to the city of Homewood, C4A, retail shopping district, whereas the city council has determined and set a public hearing for March 29, 2021, at which time and place all persons may be provided an opportunity to speak for or against such rezoning request. Now therefore be ordained by the city council as follows, that the following described property located at 1713 18th Street South with a legal description attached as Exhibit A be in the same as here, but taken from the current zoning classification MXD and rezoned to the city of Homewood, C4A zoning district. Section 2, that from and after enactment of this ordinance, that the uses permitted applicable to C4A zoning district shall apply to this property. Section 3, that March 29, 2021, at 6 o'clock PM is the time and place for the public hearing, at which time such all interested parties may appear and be heard. Section 4, that the clerk has given notice of the public hearing as provided by law. Section 5, that any part of provision or order declared to be unconstitutional or invalid by a court of conduct jurisdiction, all other parts not otherwise affected shall remain in full force and effect. And section 6, ordinance should become effective immediately upon its passage by the city council or approval of the mayor's otherwise becoming law.
Thank you very much. All right, any questions or comments from council? If not, I would, Mr. Sims?
Yes, I just have a question. I know that, and this is just kind of talking it through, but, so we're going from mixed use to C4A, so we're, it's down zoning, but when they, that occurs, they're not required to identify or add any parking because mixed, mixed use requires that, and the plan, C4A does not. There's no parking requirements. And in this area, we're going to have new retail for Rodney Scott's, Little Donkey, and Edgar's. My question is, is where will those customers be directed to park in general, knowing that there will be no, there's some angled parking on 18th, but I just want to, just hear where those customers will be, you know, directed to park when they enter into those establishments?
Sure. So let me, let me start with this. The parking that was there for MXD, none of that, it went away because of this change. So in other words, whatever parking was there for MXD is, is there for, is still present. So there's no loss of parking. So I don't have it in, the drawing in front of me, but I, there is the on-street parking for 18th Street. I believe there are a couple of spaces also in, inside the, I shouldn't say a couple, I don't know how many it is, but inside--
There's some parking in the front of the building.
Yeah. In, in front of the building and, and inside that block of development. There will be, and then there may be, there will be other public, any public parking, obviously, is available to them, but it, this did not take away parking in any way.
I mean, in my, and I agree, public parking, I mean, you can direct them towards the public parking here near Soho. And I was just wondering if there is any additional public parking in that area of the block. I'm not saying that, that we necess-- I mean, I'm, I'm not advocating for a whole lot of more, more parking because I think that that breaks down the walkability, but I'm just wondering--
Sure.
If I'm a customer and, at, you know, Rodney Scott, and there's no parking in front of, you know, the, the building on the street, where, where am I directed to go?
I think you, I don't know that you, where you'd be directed to go, because you could go to any public parking, but I think you could park up here, you could park in the deck, you could park in any other public parking around there.
Yeah. I mean, and I think, so that's just something to keep in mind, is if we do have people from out of the area who come to these new establishments, that we have some type of wayfinding to direct to public parking.
Correct. And I, and that's something actually that Ms. Andres brought up with me recently, that we need to, as, as the new developments go in, we need to, we need to start looking at how are pedestrians getting from one place to the other in downtown so that we're not dealing with a divided area, that it's all one area that works together with wayfinding and pedestrian walkways. And so I think that is something that we're going to be looking at in the coming months. But I think that's, I appreciate you bringing up that concern, because I think that's something we do need to look at.
That was on my list, Nick. Remember, from the meeting? That was, that was on my list for the year. That's, that's one of my projects I want to work on for next year, for sure.
Mr. Jones?
Yeah, and I also want to mention, we, you know, we have made progress with the signage that was out here for, to get in the deck. I mean, it used to be about this size, and no one knew where to go, so we've really improved that. So that additional signage at that location would, would probably be good to redirect them to where there is available parking.
All right. I guess with that, then, I would entertain a motion for unanimous consent.
I would make a motion for unanimous consent.
Second.
By Ms. Smith, second by Ms. Andres. Roll call vote, please, Ms. Salter.
Counselor Gualtney?
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Gier?
Yes.
Counselor Alamon?
Yes.
Counselor Wolverton?
Yes.
Counselor Sims?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Nels?
Yes.
Counselor Andres?
Yes.
Counselor Harden?
Yes.
President Wyatt?
Yes. All right. With that, I would entertain a motion and a second for approval.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Ms. Willie. Thank you. Motion by Ms. Nels, second by Mr. Gualtney. This will be ordinance 2800. Another roll call vote, please, Ms. Salter.
Counselor Gualtney?
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Gier?
Yes.
Counselor Alamon?
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Wolverton?
Yes.
Counselor Sims?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Nels?
Yes.
Counselor Andres?
Yes.
Counselor Harden?
Yes.
President Wyatt?
Yes. That is 11 to 0, and that will be ordinance number 2800. All right, next item, 090321, public hearing set for tonight for offense variance at 517 Woodland Drive, brought to us by councilors Jones and Sims. And we'll start with a report from Special Issues. Ms. Smith?
Yes, we met on whatever day that was. I'm sorry, before spring break. And we voted 5 to 0 to defer this item out to the full council without recommendation pending the public hearing tonight. The motion was made by Ms. Andres and seconded by Mr. Sims.
All right. Thank you very much. And with that, we will open the public hearing and ask if any, there's anyone to speak for or against this item.
President Wyatt, councilors, my name is Jimbo Terrell. My wife and I and our family have lived at 517 Woodland Drive since May of 2009. Adjacent to our property is a storm sewer that is in the city right-of-way. It basically runs pretty much the entire length of our property. There is a fence, a chain-link fence around that storm sewer. In the process of getting some quotes for a new wooden fence in our backyard, fence company came out, examined the chain-link fence, determined that it was, quote, "dead", meaning that the poles were not working very well, that could be pushed over fairly easily, and recommended we get it replaced. I contacted Councilor Jones and Sims, they came out. I believe Mr. Pugh came out at some point in time, inspected it, determined that the fence needed to be replaced, and the city offered to replace it. I'm here seeking a variance because we would like to pay the cost out of our pocket to do it in wood so that it ties into the rest of the fencing in our house. The reason I need a variance is because the existing fence extends beyond the front corner of our house. With that, I can entertain questions. I've got pictures, if anybody needs them.
Okay. Let me, let me check first, just see if there's anyone else here to speak to this item. All right, with that, I will close the public hearing, and then if any councilors have questions or comments. All right. If not, then I would entertain a motion and a second.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Jones, second by Ms. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and that passes 11 to 0, and will be Resolution 2140. 2140. All right. Next item, 160221, request for permission to work in the city right-of-way at 511 Edgeland Place to add, fill dirt, and plant a tree, brought to us by Dawn Curtis and Wyatt Pugh. This was carried over from March 1. And we'll start with a report from Special Issues.
Yes, committee met. We heard from Ms. Curtis about what she's planning on doing. She is planning on planting a Japanese maple, if I'm not mistaken, yeah, in a place where there used to be a tree, so she's using the existing hole and planting a new tree. And we voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval of this pending all the proper indemnification agreements, and the motion was made by Mr. Sims and seconded by Ms., Mr. Alamon, sorry, 5 to 0.
All right, thank you. So we have a motion from Special Issues. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Is also 11 to 0, and will be Resolution 2141. Next item's 020321, request to declare the following vehicle surplus, a 2011 International, a 1994 International 4700 aerial lift, 2004 Ford F450 Super Duty Bucket Truck, and then a couple items that were added in committee, a 6 by 12 utility trailer, and a 1997 Ford Taurus GL. And we will start with a report from Finance. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met on the Ides of March, and--
[laughter]
Thank you, I appreciate the education for tonight. And indeed, we did meet and vote 4 to 0 to recommend approval, and, and we did add the 1997 Ford Taurus and the trailer. So all of that was included in that. It was made by Mrs. Smith and seconded by Mr. Harden.
It was 4 to 0.
4 to 0. Yeah. Thank you very much. Mr. Jones? Mr. Kendrick, can you give us the first reading?
Yes, it's an ordinance to declare certain personal property as surplus. Be ordained by the city council as follows. Hereby established and declared that the following described personal property of the city is no longer needed for public or municipal purposes and therefore declared surplus to it, 1997 Ford Taurus GL, 2011 International, 1994 International 4700 aerial lift, a 2004 Ford F450 Super Duty Bucket Truck, and a 6 by 12 utility truck, trailer. Section 2, that the mayor and clerk be authorized and directed to dispose of the property by auction to the highest bidder.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments?
I would make a motion for unanimous consent.
Second.
Thank you very much. Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Mr. Harden. Roll call vote, please, Ms. Salter.
Counselor Gualtney?
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Gier?
Yes.
Counselor Alamon?
Yes.
Counselor Wolverton?
Yes.
Counselor Sims?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Nels?
Yes.
Counselor Andres?
Yes.
Counselor Harden?
Yes.
And President Wyatt?
Yes. That is 11 to 0, and that will be ordinance 1801. All right, next--
2801.
I'm sorry, 2801.
She didn't think we had that to you over here, did she?
Yeah. Wishful thinking.
Yeah.
All right, next item, 030321, request to authorize an individual project order for Kim Lee Horn and Associates to provide design and construction documents for the Salter Road Sidewalk Project. I can't tell you how happy I am to read that item. All right, a report from Finance. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The committee met, voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes 11 to 0, and it will be Resolution 2142. All right, next item, 100321, request to create city engineer position with the Jefferson County Personnel Board and to fund the position in the fiscal year 2021 budget, brought to us by the mayor. Mr. Kendrick, this is two different resolutions. Is that correct?
The first one creates the position, the second one is funding, and Ms. Salter throwing that up, is part of a budget amendment.
Okay.
It has that and a number of other options.
All right.
Well, it's like, it's actually, Robert and I worked it out, it's actually a budget amendment for just his, just for that position plus the benefits. It's not doing any, anything.
Got it.
We do have a budget referral going, but this one is amending the budget to create Department 13 for his salaries and all his fringes, and Robert has a few main needs, has the Excel sheet, but we sent it out this weekend to you, if there's any questions.
Okay.
He has copies, everybody's a need one.
All right, thank you. So the, so the first thing we'll deal with is creating the position.
to see if there's any questions.
Okay.
He has copies for everybody who's in need one.
All right, thank you. So the, so the first thing we'll deal with is creating the position. Any questions or comments on that? If not, I would entertain a motion for... Well, we... Oh, I'm sorry, we've got a motion from Finance. I apologize.
Yes, we told you. We gotta pay for this.
He will. That's why, look, that's why he's here.
I mean, I'm here to answer any questions.
The fact that I have made it this long before doing that, and when I saw some other people who shall remain nameless do it every week, I'm proud of myself that I made it this long.
Yes, and I'm proud of you as well.
Appreciate that. That's right, that's right.
That's right, that's right. So, yeah, you're doing great.
All right.
So, yes, the Finance Committee did meet, and we voted five to zero to recommend approval. First resolution would be to create the position. And so we're splitting the departments into building inspections, engineering, and zoning. So we're creating, and then the, so it's to create the position, grade 32, step seven. And then the second resolution that we approved would be to fund and amend the budget. So I've got those numbers if you need that.
Thank you very much. All right, so we'll start with the motion from Finance to create the position. Any questions or comments about that? And all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 11 to zero and is 2143. And then next, we will deal with the motion from Finance to fund the position by amending the general fund budget. Any questions or comments about that? And then all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is also 11 to zero and will be Resolution 2144. All right, next item, 110321, request for consideration of contracts per retiring employees' request regarding health insurance, brought by myself. And we will start with a report from Finance.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The committee met, voted five to zero to recommend approval of this item.
All right, any questions or comments from the council? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that also passes 11 to zero and will be 2145.
Mr. President?
Yeah.
I didn't realize that 160221, it appears twice.
It is. So that's, thank you. That is actually a duplicate item that was just put on there twice, so we will not be dealing with it the second time. But if anyone sees it on the, on the agenda, that's why it's there.
That was my bad. I went in and put everybody, Martin, all y'all saw it, but he had it again. We missed it, me and Amy. Robert, all three.
All right, so we'll move on to 021120, request for consideration of franchise agreement for ceasefire brought to us by Counselor Gualtney. And we'll start with a report from Public Works, Mr. Wolverton.
Thank you, Mr. President. Committee met and voted five to zero to recommend approval. Motion was made by Counselor Sims and seconded by Counselor Nels.
Thank you very much. Mr. Kendrick, can you give us a first reading?
Yes, sir. It's an ordinance to granting fiber optics franchise to Telepac Network, Inc., a wholly-owned subsidiary of Telepac, Inc., a Delaware corporation doing business as ceasefire business, whereas the city reserves the right to exercise control over streets and public places and to acquire the city's consent prior to using the highway, streets, and alleys and public ways, whereas state law confers the city certain rights and requirements for a franchise and permission to use a public right of way, and whereas franchisee has requested from the city, franchise use the streets and public ways of the city to conduct business as a telecommunications system provider, and whereas the city and the franchisee have negotiated a franchise agreement which is attached as Exhibit A and made a party of it that's fully set out herein. Now, therefore being ordained by the City Council as follows, the City Council does by adoption this resolution grant to the franchisee franchise pursuant to terms, conditions, restrictions, and requirements set out in the franchise agreement attached as Exhibit A, terms and conditions which are specifically incorporated to this ordinance as it's fully set out herein. Section two, that pursuant to the laws of the State of Alabama, the city grants to the franchisee a franchise for a period of 10 years, granting to the franchise the right and privilege and authority to construct and maintain a telecommunications system necessary for the franchisee to provide it, to act as a telecommunications system provider pursuant to the franchise agreement. Section three, the franchise, by accepting franchise, agrees as it will upon making any excavations of streets, alleys, avenues, public ways, or other public places, restore the surface or paving at the point of such excavation and substantially the same condition as before such work was done, and all as promptly as may be practical and within a reasonable length of time as required by Exhibit A, as otherwise required by a federal, state, or local ordinances or regulations. Section four, the rights, privileges, and authorities of consent, consents, and the franchise hereby granted may be exercised by the franchisee but not by any other successor or assigns without prior approval of the city pursuant to Exhibit A. Section five, that when the, when this ordinance has been accepted by the franchisee, it should constitute a franchise agreement between the city and the franchisee, which acceptance shall be acknowledged by the execution of the agreement which has been executed by ceasefire, passed and adopted this the blank day of March, bound between the city and municipal corporation, whose address is 2850 19th Street South, and Telepac Networks, Inc., a Missick Corporation individually binding through its wholly-owned subsidiary, Telelinks, Inc., a Delaware corporation doing business ceasefire business. And the franchise agreement has been executed by ceasefire.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments? If not, I'd entertain a motion for unanimous consent. Motion by Mr. Alamon, second by Mr. Gualtney. And a roll call vote, please, Ms. Salter.
Counselor Gualtney?
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Gier?
Yes.
Counselor Alamon?
Yes.
Counselor Wolverton?
Yes.
Counselor Sims?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Nels?
Yes.
Counselor Andrews?
Yes.
Counselor Harden?
Yes.
And President Wyatt.
Yes. All right. With that, I'd entertain a motion for approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Alamon, second by Mr. Gualtney. Another roll call vote, please, Ms. Salter.
Counselor Gualtney?
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Gier?
Yes.
Counselor Alamon?
Yes.
Counselor Wolverton?
Yes.
Counselor Sims?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Nels?
Yes.
Counselor Andrews?
Yes.
Counselor Harden?
Yes.
And President Wyatt.
Yes. So that is 11 to zero and will be ordinance 2803. All right, which brings us to 040321, bid opening set for April 19 at 4:31 PM for the Mamie L. Foster Rosedale Drive Intersection Improvement Project brought to us by Wyatt Pugh of our BEZ department. And we've got a report from Public Works, Mr. Wolverton.
Yes, the committee voted five to zero to recommend approval and refer this item to Finance Committee. The motion was made by Counselor Nels and seconded by Counselor Harden.
Thank you very much. So it's already in Finance, as I recall, and I know that Ms. Salter is working with the engineers to get that, get the specifications out. And as long as they're able to do that, where there's two weeks to get it back, then we'll stick with this date. If not, then we'll deal with it next week in Finance. But for now, we'll leave it on April 19. All right, and that brings us to the committee referral agenda. I would entertain a motion for approval of the amended committee referral agenda.
So moved.
I have a quick question, if I could.
Hey, let me get the second real quick and then, I'm sorry, was it about the committee referral agenda or was it back on the...
It's about one of the items under the committee referral agenda.
Yeah, let me just see if I get a second first and for approval.
Who was the first?
Harden. Second for Mr. Jones. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Gier.
The first item, 120321, request to authorize Kimley Horn to look at Mecca Avenue sidewalk. I didn't catch that in advance. I don't know if the wording, I'm wondering about changing the wording to that. Is now the time to do that or is exactly what we're asking in our scope of work?
Sure, what, I mean, yeah, I think we, I think we can change it. I don't, I don't know if we ever done that before, and Mr. Kendrick, I don't know if that changes anything notice-wise.
It's going to committee anyway.
Yeah, so...
It's going to committee anyway?
It's going to committee, correct.
Okay, well, just for the record, I was hoping we could extend it to include studying safety-related speed, wrong-way traffic on that street, in addition to requesting sidewalk options.
Okay, so, request to authorize individual.
That would be a separate process, though.
That goes to a different committee.
Yeah.
It's a public.
Yeah, so I think that the issue we're going to have there is that this sidewalk has already been approved, it's just a matter of what it's going to, where it's going to go and things like that. So that's why it's going to Finance is because that part has already come through planning and development as a sidewalk. I think that item, we would need to create a separate item to go on the next committee referral agenda to go to public safety. And then we could, we could get Kimley Horn to combine them once we, once they go through and make them all part of the same study, but I think we have to send that through public safety first.
Okay, but for this one, when we say to provide design and construction documents, do we need to be specific if we want to look at different sidewalk options in terms of placement of sidewalk and so forth?
I think we, if we want to change the wording to provide design and construction documents for placement of Mecca Avenue sidewalk project?
Request sidewalk options, placement options.
To provide design and construction documents for sidewalk options?
Placement.
Placement of sidewalk options?
For going to Finance, aren't we, we're just looking at...
Funding.
Funding.
Correct.
Hadn't we already gone over, I mean, I remember Greg going over this for months about where the sidewalk's going to go. Are we not past that? Are we, or is that going to be something Kimley Horn brings to Finance?
My understanding is that's, that's one reason we needed Kimley Horn in there was to look at those options.
Okay.
But we have to, Finance has to approve the money before Kimley Horn can do that.
Okay, 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 that makes...
I think that's where we are.
So I think that's inferred that they're going to tell us where the sidewalk needs to go based on...
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't have any problem with adding that language to it regarding, regarding placement.
And maybe it's more discussion with, direct discussion with Kimley Horn as the, as the process...
Sure.
...goes forward. I'm just, I just wasn't sure.
Yeah, I don't mind adding that language to it for, for the agenda for next week.
We're saying construction documents for placement of sidewalk options to the Mecca Avenue sidewalk project.
I think that's it.
Okay.
Does that work, Ms. Gier? Does that sound good to you?
So, request to authorize an individual project order for Kimley Horn and Associates to provide design and construction documents for placement of sidewalk options to the Mecca Avenue sidewalk project.
That sounds good to me.
Okay, we'll make that change. With that change, Mr. Harden, you willing to amend your motion to include that?
As long as we haven't confused Kimley Horn, yes, I will. Kimley Horn has already provided a scope of what they plan to do to BEZ, which is to look at options. So it's, we're belaboring semantics at this point, but...
Mr. Jones, I'm assuming you would, your second would be fine with that?
I'm fine with the change.
All right, so with that, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that agenda is approved, amended agenda is approved, 11 to zero. Which brings us to other new business, 170321, request to set a public hearing for consideration of a side yard setback variance for a fence at 3017 Roxbury Road brought to us by Patrick Jackson, the homeowner, and Wyatt Pugh from BEZ department. We will set that public hearing for April 12 at 6 o'clock. Next item, 180321, request to set a public hearing for, for a permit, or to permit a front yard fence partially in the right-of-way along the creek at 624 Forest, brought to us by Scott Smith and Wyatt Pugh. That will also be set for April 12 at 6 PM. Next item, 190321, request for consideration of ABC O20 Restaurant Retail Liquor License for Little London Kitchen LLC doing business as The Little London located at 162 Oxmore Road, brought to us by Melody Salter, our city clerk and assistant finance director. We have received a letter of no objection from the police on this, but the fire is still doing their part. So if anyone's so inclined, yeah, Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I would, I would move to having no objection to the issuance of the license contingent upon police.
Fire.
Fire, I'm sorry, fire providing the approval.
Second.
All right, motion by Mr. Jones, second by Mr. Wolverton. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 11 to zero. Next item, 200321, request for consideration of ABC License 140 Special Events Retail for Cafe Is LLC doing business as the Service Guild of Birmingham, Inc., Gala at 1 Independence Plaza, which is the parking lot of 1 Independence Plaza on April 24, 2021. This one actually does not need a fire inspection because it is a different kind of license. So, Ms. Salter, do you have everything you need or do you?
Yes.
Okay, you're good.
We can issue it tomorrow.
Great, okay. So I'd entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gualtney, second by Ms. Smith, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And also passes 11 to zero. All right, 210321, request for consideration of approval of vouchers for the period of March 9, 2021 through March 29, 2021, brought to us by Robert Brigette, our Finance Director and Assistant City Clerk, and Melody Salter, our City Clerk and Assistant Finance Director. Mr. Jones?
This is Mrs. Smith, last time.
Is it really? Oh, that makes me so excited.
And bad news probably for...
[laughing]
If I could pay her to keep doing that.
No, you cannot. There's not enough money in the world.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I had a lot of questions this time. I'm sure I made Mr. Brigette crazy today with my list of questions, but he got them all answered, and I feel 100% comfortable saying I've moved to approve the voucher payment. Sorry.
Thank you very much. Ms. Smith, do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Wolverton. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
That's 46.
Thank you. So that's 11 to zero also, and it will be Resolution 2146.
What's 46? It's an ordinance.
That was an ordinance.
That's ordinance 2802.
Sorry.
Sorry.
No problem. All right, last item, 220321, request to set a public hearing for consideration of a variance to increase size of two wall signs at 2719 19th Place South, brought to us by Rod Virchell of Alpha Graphics and Wyatt Pugh of our BEZ department. This one will also be set for April 12 at 6 PM. Which brings us to the end of our agenda. Mr. Mayor, you have anything tonight?
Just a few things. One, I hope everybody will keep those affected by the fires and the tornadoes that we've been dealing with over the past several weeks, in your thoughts and prayers, and thank you to, I know Chief Hill is back there, thank you to the Homewood Fire Department and the Homewood Police Department for your great work during those, during those incidents. Want to read out really quick, I had made a post about it, and there's just so much information that I actually have to, to read it, but two of our library employees were awarded some very prestigious awards by the Alabama Library Association. And I just wanted to mention that Heather Cover was selected for the ALLA Eminant Librarian Award. This award was bestowed upon librarians for exceptional and enduring contributions toward the development of library service in the state of Alabama. This is the highest honor that ALLA awards every year. So Ms. Cover has served with the Homewood Perfect Library for over 25 years in numerous capacities, and has also been very active in the Library Association, so we certainly want to congratulate her. And then Edward Eggleston was selected for the ALLA Para Librarian Award. This award is presented to an outstanding library employee in support staff role who goes above and beyond the limits of the job title, and he has also worked at the Homewood Library for over 20 years and is certainly well-known by the patrons and the Homewood community for providing excellent customer service as he fulfills their information needs. So congratulations to both of them. And then thank you guys very much for approving the position and the funding for the city engineer. I know I appreciate it, and I know Mr. Pugh back there appreciates it as well. So hopefully, hopefully we can get that, that position filled pretty quickly and get things rolling, because I know we have a lot of stuff that is pending. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.[1631.60] Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right, Mr. Gualtney.
Counselor Jones, assume 5:00. How long do you need?
30 minutes.
30 minutes. All right, I will set public safety for 5:30, for 15 minutes. Only two comments, the mayor stole my thunder on one of them with regards to the library. You know, having been the library board liaison, I was excited to see that news as well. So thank you, Mayor, wherever you took off to. For capturing that, I also wanted to add that I'm also excited about the ceasefire franchise agreement that we passed tonight. I think that's something good for the city when you have companies that are interested in investing in fiber choice. Not all of our neighborhoods are served by reliable internet. Nothing against any of our existing service providers, but when you have a company that wants to come in and invest in your city and bring fiber to every home and every business, I think that's a really big deal. I do plan on working with them, because Counselor Smith is probably pinching, or beating her phone wherever my contact is about another person digging up our streets. But whenever we first started these discussions, we did talk about the importance of notifying neighbors, putting door hangers out, but also not doing what other providers have done, which is dropping handholds, you know, three per block. So we'll work with them to make sure that they file permits with BEZ that are not negatively impacting our neighbors. So, good stuff. I'm excited they're coming.
Absolutely. That's it. Thank you very much. Ms. Gier?
Yes, a couple of things. I just wanted to recognize the Edgewood Garden Club, because they work really hard this time of year, keeping Woodland Park clean. Actually, they work all year, but this is a busy year for our parks and public green spaces, cleaning them up for everybody to enjoy the spring and summer. They also help at Sims Garden. Ann Damsgaard and Chris Underwood do a really good job. And there's also a woman who doesn't even live in Homewood, who heads up the Woodland Park cleanup efforts. So thank you to them. And then also, Jeremy Lovell is working with Molly Erickson to bring adults to our public parks, starting this coming Saturday. We're meeting in Central Park with Free Yoga at 8:00 a.m., and we're going to continue that throughout the spring and summer at various parks. It's gonna be, we're gonna be in Spring Park in May, I think on the first and the third Saturday of the month, if I'm not mistaken. But just keep an eye out on Facebook for that. But we're excited to bring people around Homewood together outside to enjoy this weather. So please join us. Free Yoga, Alex.
Thank you very much. Mr. Alamo?
Yes, I just want to also say that the mayor and Counselor Gualtney stole my thunder as the current public library liaison. So congratulations to Heather Cover and Edward Eggleston. It's great to see what a great institution we have here in Homewood in terms of the library. Second, there are job opportunities, if you want to work at the fantastic library. And so you should go to their website and check out if you want to be a part of their team. I know that Debbie Fow would be happy to have folks apply, and she leads a great team at the library. Second, I want to mention that the owners and developers of 260 Oxmoor will be having an open forum on March 31st, this Wednesday, at Nexus Fitness. They send a party opportunity, especially for residents of West Homewood, to hear what those plans are, and give feedback, whatever it may be, to the owners and developers of that project. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wolverton?
I just wanted to say, I hope everybody had a good, enjoyable spring break, hopefully relatively uneventful. And also, second, what the mayor said about those that were affected by the storms, and then there was a fire in an apartment complex in our ward. And so, thank you to the people that helped and assisted those folks. I know the Red Cross has stepped in. And so my understanding right now is that nobody is, people are displaced temporarily, but have a place to stay currently. I also wanted to thank Trinity West Homewood for a couple of things. Twice in the last week and a half, they offered their building as a storm shelter during the storms. So, you know, fortunately, we didn't have to utilize it, but I appreciate the fact that they opened it up and were willing to host people there. And secondly, they've been doing coffee Wednesday mornings for parents on the way to school, and that's gonna go through this Wednesday. So, coming up, they are almost completed. And then lastly, I just wanted to make sure that everybody knows that there's currently a plan to promote the Street Safety Day at Hall Kent Elementary School. The tentative date for that is April 23rd, which is a Friday. And so I wanted to thank the school system. Talked to Superintendent Dr. Hefner, and talked to Chief Ross, and everybody else that's been involved, Kiana Coleman, and they are all excited and very willing and able to help assist us with that again this year. So be on the lookout for some little people around the park on the 23rd. Obviously, weather pending, since it'll be outside, but hopefully we'll have some good weather that day. And lastly, I guess, happy second birthday to our caboose. He turned two on Tuesday, and we had a good little birthday celebration, and he's happy as a clam, so.
Hey, Andrew, you have an item.
Yeah. Yes, and I was, yep. So we've got, how long are you, Mr. Gualtney, 15? Okay. So let's set public works for, I believe, let's see. Really, we've got the franchise agreement for Spire, and then the new, nothing new there. But then we also have the AT&amp;T. So I think that should be 15 minutes. Should be fine.
You're doing 5:45 to 6?
5:45 to 6 would be great. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Sims?
Thank you, President White. Just about the beautification board, I want to follow up on that first. So there will be a meeting in early April. I encourage everyone to look online on the city website. Also, I'll post something, once the agenda's up, on my Facebook, and send it out via newsletter as well. But if anyone's interested in the beautification board and submitting interest, you know, this next meeting is a good opportunity to figure out a little bit about what the board's about. So I encourage anyone in the public to, you know, participate, or at least listen in via Zoom. And that, like I said, that agenda will be posted online, as well as the Zoom link in the coming week. In regards to that meeting, we will be talking some about potential community cleanup opportunities, where the board can engage with residents. We've been looking at partnering with the Friends of Shades Creek, and doing a segment of, along Griffin, to do some cleanup. And that's basically to compliment what the litter getter ain't getting so far, I guess. May not be making it to it. We want to pick up that street, you know, that bank, and make sure we're just beautifying the city, and looking at subsequent future projects as well, to kind of have an engagement component of the beautification board and get citizens involved. On a personal side, I'd just like to, as we're winding down Women's History Month, I'd like to give a shout out to a couple of very special people in my life. First of all, my wife, Stacy Davis. She did production council on a film called Minari, and it's actually nominated for six Academy Awards forthcoming. So just wanted to give a shout out to her. And also my mom, who is retiring on Wednesday at the age of 61. She had, I'm sorry, 71. She has a second career. She had a second career after working with a family business at my, you know, my parents' sawmill. She went back to school and started working with Auburn Cooperative Extension Services in Coleman, doing programs like Kids Cope and 4-H, and a lot of other great programs. And her retirement date is on Wednesday. So just wanted to give a shout out to her. I love you, Mom. Thanks.
Congratulations to them both. Mr. Jones?
Expect me to follow that? Well, finance will be at 5:00. And that is a great film, Minari. Stacy does some really incredible, and some of them are shorts. And so you ought to look at some of the stuff that she's involved with. I mean, they're amazing. So proud of all the work that she does with that. I wanted to mention, as we're approaching Easter, and I'm blessed to be able to sing in my church choir. So I was told, okay, I'm singing at the 9:00 service. So my whole family went online to register, and within two minutes, all the services were booked. And I thought about that, and I thought, you know, I hope.
Do you know someone important that can get in?
I don't think so. But it's just, I hope that we're at the end of all of this COVID, because it's such a sad thing that we're, you know, we're having to reserve church and all these things that are different for us. I mean, I just hope that we're nearing the end of that. And then I'm also thinking about the Board of Education. What a really tough time to serve on the board, to get through this. And I think they have done a really fantastic job of doing everything they could to keep things going. And it was really tough, and I don't know that many people have mentioned that, but I mean, I just appreciate the board and their leadership, and just keeping it going. You know, just have something. And hopefully, we're, again, out of this. But it's been on my mind that we, you know, there are so many systems that hadn't, they've not even gone back to in-person. So I appreciate all the work that they've done. And then, thank you, Mayor, for your leadership over the past few days. I know that we're stepping up and helping the other communities who need our help with tornado relief. And then Ms. Andrews, you're coordinating pickup for items, and I think you're involved too. Mr. Sims, so I hope, I mean, we're always going to step up like that. So I appreciate all that we do for these other cities. So that's all I have.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Ms. Smith?
Yes. You know, here's my monthly soccer update. The week before spring break, Homewood's varsity team beat both Broward and Mountain Brook, who was rated number one in the state, ranked number one in the state at the time. And we beat them easily. Let me just say that. Let me say that out loud. It was 5-2. It was, and it was 5-2 at the very end. It was not 5-2 earlier. So it was 5-0. So they, it was a good week of soccer. We have three games this week, and we, I think beating Mountain Brook put us in the playoffs, for sure. So now it's just a matter of maintaining, and our goalkeeper currently has, is ill. So that's going to present some interesting challenges. But I will set special issues for 6:00 on the 5th. And I think, I've got three issues, but they're just fence variances. So, well, I'm scared to say 15 minutes, because I'm scared it will take longer. I'll just say 6:30.
Do we have any 20?
I know.
How much increments of 15?
Right, right. 6:25, no, 6:20. I can, I can totally do 6:20.
6:25.
Yes. Yeah, that's easy. I can do that. And that's it for me.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Nelms?
I don't have anything special. I just want to say thanks for your leadership, everyone. And that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you very much. Ms. Andrews?
Well, I have, I would like to address something that Counselor Sims said, and something that Counselor Jones said, in good news in both the courts. I'll start with the litter getter. I have litter getter update from Griffin Creek. I don't have Shades Creek. For some reason, I only get Griffin Creek, and I always have to ask for Shades. I think it's because we have a grant for one, and we purchased the other one. So in the month, so by the end of February, so for January and February, we had collected 84 pounds. And of the 84 pounds, we were able to recycle 20 of that. To date, since that has been in place, we have collected 384 pounds of litter, 100 pounds of which has been recycled. So that's pretty cool. Yeah, and that's just Griffin Creek. That doesn't include Shades Creek. So I want to say that. Now, to Counselor Jones's point, the numbers are really trending great in Jefferson County. We had our Unified Command Call today at 11:00, as we always do. We have 114 in the hospital, 32 on ventilators, 44 in the ICU, and only one death yesterday. So those numbers are really, really on a downward trajectory. And the CDC came out today, you guys may have seen this already, and the real-world efficacy of the Pfizer and the Moderna vaccine is matching the testing that was done. So in the testing environment, the efficacy was 90%. They have borne that out in the real world, and that is a 90% efficacy. So that's just great news. So we are coming to an end to this, we are. In regards to the schools, the recommendation now is only three feet apart with universal masking. So in our school system, it's going to maintain masking. So three feet apart with universal masking. The Bruno event team has gotten involved, and they are doing vaccinations. And they have an airport site that just opened this week, where they'll be able to process 3,500 people a week. And people have found out about that, and they are getting signed up to go there and the availability. And now Wim Dixie is on board. So now we've got Wim Dixie at Montavalla Road and Centerpoint Parkway. So that is all good news. I mean, it is, it's coming. It's been a rough, 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 rough 13 months, but there is a lot of doom in this town. So. And I will set P and D, so that put me, what, at 6:20? Okay, I'll set P and D for 6:20.
6:20.
6:20.
We're both in the 15-minute for us.
Yeah, we're gonna say, we're gonna do 10-minute increments instead of 15 minutes. 6:20. And quickly, I did want to add, and I will send this out in my newsletter tomorrow for Ward 5, but the Water Works is behind schedule on Rumson, of course, because of the storms and the rain and everything. So they are behind schedule. But I am communicating with them on the regular and getting updates from them. They are on Rumson Road today, and they made the turn onto Yorkshire today. So they continue to work in the area. And I also would be remiss if I did not ask for prayers for the Montgomery family and the most beautiful little girl ever, Annie Montgomery. So please keep their family in your prayers, really. Just amazing little girl. So, that's it.
Thank you very much. Mr. Harden?
I don't have much either, although Rumson has been a mess for a while, as everybody knows. I've lived in a lot of places in my career and life, and Homewood is a special place. And sometimes I think, some folks don't always believe that, but we just don't need to forget what a special place and how lucky we are to live here. Second thing is just wish everybody a happy Easter.
Thank you very much. I really don't have much tonight, other than to echo what Mr. Jones said. I just want to thank the mayor for always allowing and encouraging our people to go help out other cities when they need it. We've always done that, we always should do that. Hopefully, we'll never need them to return the favor, but I'm confident that they will if we ever do. And I just think that's an important part of our, you know, metropolitan area and state, and how we help each other out. I think that's a great thing that we always do. So thank you for that, Mr. Mayor. And with that, we will close tonight's meeting, and we will be back here next week for committees, and then back for our next council meeting on the 12th. Thank you very much.